No, he was...
I know. Don't come anywhere near me, but I do have propo... I know. Alright. It's four o'clock, alright. Is everybody all set?
We are ready.
Alright. Call this evening's meeting to order. Welcome the Cloverdale Unified School District joining us on this joint meeting. Your interest and participation are encouraged and appreciated. Please silence all pagers, cellular telephones, and other communications devices upon entering the meeting. And we'll go ahead and have the Pledge of Allegiance, and since my usual victim is not here, may I have the Chair of the School Board meet us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. And may we have the roll call for the City Council?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Mayor Bagby?
Present.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
And would you like to have, so call roll call for you?
Sure.
Excuse, I apologize, but I only know about three of you up there.
All school board members are present.
Supervisor Decker?
Actually, why don't you just, why don't we take a moment to introduce ourselves then? Just starting at our left.
Jeremy Decker, Superintendent.
Preston Addison, School Board.
Decker, here, School Board.
Cecile Peters, School Board.
Eric Higginbotham, School Board.
Todd Lamb, School Board.
Thank you. So then we'll move on to public comments. This is a special meeting, and only comments or statements concerning the agenda items listed below are allowed. Each public comment is restricted to three minutes in length. And under new business, we have discussion of civil engineering plans and layout for the Washington Street extension.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Item number one is in regards to a project that the city has been working on for a number of years, and it's related to future development of the Times Square property. Included on the dais are some exhibits, and I just want to take a few minutes to, particularly for the school board, just to give an overview of how this item has developed over time and where we are today. Several years ago, I would say approximately three years ago, the city started on a master plan process for what's referred to as the Times Square property, and that's the property that's located roughly south and east of Washington School, south of the Citrus Fair, and west of South Cloverdale Boulevard, and north of Healdsburg Avenue. Currently, there is not a connector street between Healdsburg and Washington Street that fronts the front of Washington School and also provides parking for the west side of the Citrus Fair. During the master planning process, the council identified the desire to extend Washington Boulevard and connect it to Healdsburg. Thank you, Councilmember Brigham, and let the record note that Councilmember Brigham has stepped away from the dais. So following on that discussion, the council saw it as an important roadway improvement to extend Washington Street south from its existing terminus in the front of Washington School for a number of reasons. One was to facilitate and improve traffic flow to support not only existing traffic issues, often where there's congestion in front of Washington School during the morning and afternoon hours, but also to support future development of the Times Square property. The city retained civil engineering firm, Relji and Race, to develop a parcel map for the Times Square property to support some proposed land uses. One of the major land uses on the Times Square property is Alexander Valley Wellness Center. It's a fairly large, hundred-square-foot wellness center that's proposed to be developed in the northeast corner of Times Square directly across, or directly south of Citrus Fair. In addition to the south of that, there's a parcel that has been proposed for future development of a police station, and there's an intersecting or bisecting roadway in between those two parcels. Last but not least, the council also felt it was an important location for future development of a skate park. So what's identified in your exhibits, Exhibit, excuse me, Exhibit C identifies the current parcel map as well as the layout and extension of Washington Street. Lot C, located to the most west of the extension of Washington Street, is an area that has been proposed for design and construction of a new skate park, and obviously that would abut immediately or adjacent to Washington School. One of the issues that we are trying to work through to address this future extension is the need to secure the right-of-way for that portion of Washington Street that's located between Washington School and the Citrus Fair. That currently is designated as a private road, though it does serve a number of important public purposes, and likewise, Citrus Fair Drive is also a private road. What will be included in your packet is an Exhibit, Exhibit B, which identifies the current ownership of that right-of-way. One of the things we would like to be able to do is seek approval from the two parties, including the school district as well as the Citrus Fair, to acquire that right-of-way so that we can facilitate the future extension of Healdsburg. We know this is an important improvement that would support pedestrian movement, particularly schoolchildren, to the school from primarily the southwest area of the city, but overall also improve traffic movement in and around both the school, the Times Square property, and Citrus Fair Drive. We think it has the potential to, in the way we've designed it, which is reflected on Exhibit C, there are different sections that are shown that show the proposed width of Washington Street along its entire section, and it's currently designed to include public parking, it's designed to include bicycle lanes on both sides, both the northbound and southbound lane. There is no parking in front of the skate park. That was designed by purpose to ensure that there's maximum visibility upon that area, and ultimately connect into the existing pavement area that's that portion of Washington Street located immediately adjacent to Washington Boulevard. And so we wanted to, the action of dedication ultimately involves support by the school board to dedicate that right-of-way if the school board supports that to the city. Our goal would be also to collaborate with the Citrus Fair in obtaining, and acquire the right-of-way on their half of the road section, again, to basically make what's an existing private road a public road and provide for that proper connection as part of our improvement project. Currently, the Alexander Valley Wellness Center project is moving through the entitlement process, and this is one of the kind of key issues that we are working on resolving to help traffic flow from that project. Without the necessary right-of-way, the kind of northernly half of that street section may not be improved, and we think that could continue the existing problem of traffic congestion in the area and not facilitate good traffic movement, particularly being, you know, kids being able to, schoolchildren being able to walk in or ride their bikes to school. So we were seeking a solution here to be able to make those necessary improvements, particularly as the Alexander Valley Wellness Project makes its way through the entitlement process, so we can have a really improved street section that would support future development of that property, but we also think would support both ingress and egress of parents dropping their kids off at school in the morning, and improved traffic flows in that area, and that was an area we thought, this was an issue that we thought was important because of its community importance, to have a conversation, joint discussion about with, between the city council and the school board. Mayor and the school board, that concludes staff's report. We do have here our Community Development Director and Assistant City Manager Kevin Thompson, as well as our City Engineer Mark Rincon, who has been working on this project along with me, and they're here to answer any technical questions or issues that council or the school board may have.
Thank you. So what we usually do at this point is just open it up to members of the board if you have any technical questions for City Engineer or Community Development Director, and just any clarifying questions, and then at that point I'll open it up for public comments. So does anybody have any technical questions for staff at this point?
I don't know if this is a technical question or not, but what's the, who's going to fund this, and what's the timeline for putting in Curb Gutter Street if this move, this all works out? So as I indicated, the Alexander Valley Wellness Project is moving through the entitlement process, and we are currently conditioning that project. What they've identified in terms of public improvements at this point is sidewalks all along their property, it's still under the ownership of the city, but under their development proposal. But the city is also proposing to develop a skate park in that northwest corner, so there is some shared responsibility with respect to the road improvements. So it will probably be a partnership between the city and the developer of Alexander Valley Wellness, and will be determined and probably finalized as that project makes its way through the approval process. At this point, we are not asking the school district to contribute to the cost of any, specifically of the road improvements themselves. Obviously, we do want to be mindful that there are some access needs for the school district, particularly related to fire access. It's hard to see on a small-size exhibit like this, but there is a planned driveway near the crosswalk which would facilitate emergency access to the existing asphalt path, or the existing asphalt area that currently serves Washington School. In terms of cost, we understand that the school is looking at and evaluating future development of a gymnasium. I think one topic that the council and the board may want to entertain is, you know, is there potential options for addressing storm drainage on the school site? The Wellness Project will be installing storm drain improvements, or at least that's how the project will be conditioned, so there will be storm drain improvements proposed within the area of Washington Boulevard. There is some opportunity for collaboration there, and normally, project developers, even if it's school districts, usually contribute for what they call the fair share of costs for those types of improvements. So there would be an opportunity for collaboration between the city, the school district, I mean, yeah, between the city, the school district, and Alexander Valley Wellness on the drainage piece, but not, there wasn't any plans for the school to participate in the cost of the roadway improvements.
Follow-up?
Just following up, so then, is the answer to funding that the healthcare center's going to develop and improve the road through there, and then what's a projected timeline? I know construction timelines, especially while you're still doing entitlements, are difficult, but kind of a projection for timeline? And is the current understanding now is that the healthcare development's going to develop the road through there? That's certainly city staff's perspective. That would have to be determined as the project makes its way through the entitlement process, ultimately requiring council, likely require final council approval on, and the timing, it's hard to speak to when, you know, that project would actually be developed. They've expressed the interest in moving forward fairly quickly. What that means, I'm not sure in terms of actual timing, but obviously, you know, it's our goal to try to address the right-of-way issue, you know, as soon as possible so that that's in place as the project makes its way through the entitlement process, so that the adequate right-of-way is in place to support future extension of Healdsburg Avenue, or Washington Street, excuse me.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly.
So David, I know that we discussed the sewer, sewer basically, or the drainage pipe, whatever you want to call it, underground, and if the school district, because we're planning to address all of our water issues on our own property, if the school district were to tie in, would that require you to increase the size of the drainage that you're planning to put in? Is that where the extra cost would come from, or is it just because it's a fair share?
Yeah, the fair share is based on sizing, and, you know, if our city engineer wants to weigh in on that, I want to just make sure, welcome to do so. Right now, what the developers have designed is specific to their storm drain improvement, you know, needs based on off-site flows of storm drainage, and so usually, when you add additional parties to that connection, there's additional flows that are generated, therefore, a bigger-sized pipe is necessary. So, you know, what's that cost associated with upsizing that infrastructure to support, you know, future connection? And that's something that, we don't have the data on because we haven't, you know, we haven't went down that path yet, but that's the methodology that's employed is to kind of look at, when I say fair shares, look at, well, what's the contribution of storm drains compared to other develop, you know, other development projects? And that kind of can, there's different ways to go about calculating the cost share, but it's usually done in kind of that fair share. So for example, if the school project was to generate 20% of the storm drainage, you know, one potential answer is that you're responsible for 20% of the cost, but that's kind of a simplistic way of looking at it, and the city engineer may want to elaborate.
Does that make sense? Do you have to follow-up?
Just a quick question. Aren't all our current lid BMP requirements going to require us to keep all water on-site so there's not additional drainage created as we're developing that corner?
That's true up to your Q95. After that, you're going to be overflowing, and you're going to need to overflow to a location, usually storm drain.
But compared to current flow, we're actually minimizing our flow with our development?
I'm not sure, I'm not really a participant. You'd have to ask that to your engineer that's developing your site.
I think part of the discussion, obviously, is the district feels as though we are addressed, we're not adding to the historical flow of water, in fact, we're reducing it or improving, and so to have to pay to connect doesn't seem, is this on, I can't, yeah, okay. So to pay to connect is something that, I don't know, isn't something that maybe we would want to do because we're not actually required to, in other words?
I beg to differ. The state law requires you to handle all your storm water on-site.
Right.
And so the way it is right now, it's not according to state law. It's just been historic but not legal.
So then, okay, so obviously, we'd have a difference of opinion here.
Indeed, I mean, I'm deferring back to state law.
Sure. And actually, I have our engineer as well and our council, so I don't know if we want to just discuss it. Should we talk about storm drainage now? Is it important?
Absolutely, yeah, this is a key point, so.
It has a lot to do with...
And Mayor, and Board, if you can, just be mindful that staff hasn't seen or reviewed, peer-reviewed, the analysis done by the school district on their storm drainage. If indeed, the school district could retain 100% of all the storm drainage and have no off-site flow, then there's certainly an argument that you wouldn't need to connect. The issue becomes, you know, once you design for your retention, as the city engineer mentioned, you're targeting that, you know, what they call 95 percentile, so it's based on, you know, historic rain events and how much rain is, you know, how much storm drain is going to be generated. Once you have to address above that 95%, if that's what you're designing for, you could be designing for much larger, you know, where does that storm water go? And current state law indicates it, you can't just take, you just can't take it off-site, even if that's what you're doing under current conditions, because you're developing further, you now have to treat it. That's kind of the trigger, and it involves, it does involve a lot of engineering analysis and assumptions based on storm events, how much water's being generated, what are the pavement surfaces that are increasing flows, so those are all things that, you know, you have to be looked at very carefully and assessed to make sure that you're addressing for that storm drainage, because if you don't, you know, what happens naturally is you get on-site flooding.
And I wouldn't say that we're in lockstep in our terms of understanding of that law. I think we have a little bit of a difference in kind of understanding and opinion, so I think that's probably where this all comes into play.
The ultimate arbiter of that storm water excess is the state of California. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I can?
Certainly.
Where is the school's storm drain water collected now? Is it on-site?
No, it currently sheet drains onto your property. In fact, it might be better to have our engineer discuss this versus me.
Well, with that being said, then, my question, I guess, would be to David, if the Wellness Center goes forward with their project prior to the school district reconfiguring that section there with the new gymnasium and the water retention basins, they have to stop dumping onto that property at that point in time?
Yeah, so currently, the city's in a, has an approved purchase-sale agreement with Alexander Valley Wellness for the parcel immediately, you know, north, or excuse me, east of Washington School. Once they obtain full ownership of that property and they begin the development process, they would have the right to terminate any storm drainage that is coming from off-site or from another property owner's property. Because what there is currently is there's an old storm drain that basically terminates on the Times Square property, and I think that's the state law that our city engineer is referring to, and it applies, you know, broadly, if, likewise, if the city was to be draining onto another property and they wanted to develop, they could ask us basically to cease and desist, allowing that storm drainage to continue to flow on our property. Obviously, that's not what you want to get to, you want to work out amenable solutions that makes sense from an engineering perspective and support, you know, future development.
Does that answer your question? Okay, do you want to have your engineer come forward at a time and give an overview of the current plan, or?
I think it's up to you guys if you want more of an explanation from the school district perspective. It's really up to the Board and Council.
So would that be helpful? City engineer? Would that be helpful to have an explanation from their plans?
Not really.
Okay.
It's clear in my mind.
Okay, gotcha, alright, alright. Well then, with that, if there are any other questions, technical questions, with that, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public. Would anyone like to come forward and comment on this item at this time?
Madam Mayor. We're good? Give it another shot? Let's try it one more time. Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the Board, city staff, Chief Ferguson, thank you for your time, Sean Bovee, Cloverdale. I wanted to first begin by expressing my appreciation and gratitude for all of you coming together and having what is a very important conversation. Having attended council regularly for the last decade, I don't think I've ever seen this. To have both groups of folks together to work through this is really neat. Thank you, I appreciate all of you coming together. I'm here on behalf of the skateboard park, as you probably already are aware, the drainage issue, of course, could tend to affect the skate park plan. The skate park, of course, would be at risk if the school decided that, hey, it's in our way of gymnasium plans and of our drainage program. That's my concern. I'd like to ask that you continue to be actively involved, please. We have worked at the skate park for a long, long time. Just a little bit of history, I think 20 years ago, the city spent $10,000 to put skateboard stuff over at the Boys and Girls Club. That failed. After that, we began the Asti Road Park project. We sat on the Board there for about six months before ultimately that dissolved. At that point, we then worked with the city directly in trying to find a parcel that the city and the community would be okay with, something centrally located, safe, easily accessible. We originally started at Ferber Park, gathered thousands of signatures. We were prepared to go to a ballot initiative to allow the city of Cloverdale to vote to have that skate park there at Ferber Park. I suspect that we would have largely won that ballot initiative, however, it wasn't the best location, and the city council at the time didn't approve. Then, of course, Times Square was offered as an alternative. That was the first time in 20 years that I'm aware of that we've been pursuing a skate park, that everybody involved had come together and was able to collectively decide, this is the best place for our skate park, it's past due, we need it now. So the process has been trucking along now for a couple of years. Right now, we've recently spent about $10,000 in Quimby Act funds to have a skate park developer and designer come through. We've invested considerably already at this point. I know Mr. Kelly has expressed that Alexander Valley has a timeline, so please, in this case, time is of the essence. Please, let us know how you're feeling, let us know how we can adjust, how we can compromise. The skate park is very, very important to the community of Cloverdale. So, Ken, thank you very much for your time.
Great, would anyone else like to come forward at this time and speak on the item? Alright, well, seeing none, we'll bring it back up to council and the Board for deliberations, and this time I will start to my right. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David, I guess my question to you, just as a quick update, you know, where, the city is under a lot of pressure by the healthcare center to get moving on this quickly, because they want to put the shovels in the ground and get going with the project. So, looking at us not obtaining an easement from the school district, what would happen to the Alexander Valley project? Is the whole project hinging on the school district, the school board agreeing to let the city get in there and do what they have to do on Washington Street?
Great question, Vice Mayor, and I wouldn't want to say that this proposed dedication of right-of-way would necessarily mean that the Wellness Center couldn't move forward. What it does impact, however, is... What it does impact, however, is the extension of that section that connects to the existing pavement. We've been advised that we, as a city, cannot connect directly to a private road. And therefore, what that would mean is that that portion of Washington Street may go undeveloped and, you know, not provide the necessary pavement for movement of traffic through that particular area. What it does, then, is redirect traffic from the projects elsewhere, primarily out to the Healdsburg intersection, which is currently unsignaled. And it continues, what we see is the traffic congestion, you know, particularly at certain, you know, the drop-off and pickup times with the school. So we, you know, we see it as just a project that will help relieve congestion and improve pedestrian movements. Really, what we're seeking is that right-of-way, and usually, the form that comes in is a legal exhibit that gets recorded, you know, in the favor of the city to be able to use it as public right-of-way. We obviously need to do the same with the Citrus Fair, so that that, what's currently a private road, becomes a public road. And then, the other part of that is then the city is then responsible for the long-term, you know, maintenance and operation improvement of that road. And that's really too, a key aspect of what's identified here, is it gives the city the ability to do some of the pedestrian improvements, particularly the, call them the bulb-outs, so that it helps to, from a traffic engineering perspective, slow down traffic from, you know, through the design and help, hopefully, help pedestrians move safely in that environment.
So I guess, basically, if I'm hearing you correctly, it would look exactly like it looks now, with the exception of the street coming in from Healdsburg Avenue, going up past the skateboard park, and then just dead-ending.
Correct.
Okay.
It would be necessary for us to, you know, put a barrier and not connect.
So Alexander Valley would still have the road, Washington Extension, in front of their facility? We would still have it in front of the public safety facility?
That's correct. That's correct. So traffic flows would all be diverted south, rather than have, a driver wouldn't have the option to go north, basically.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cruz, did you have anything?
Um, right over this moment.
Okay. So I'll start at my left. Questions or comments, or?
I'll just lay out a couple concerns we have. One of them I've already addressed. Number one, I think this needs to go forward. It needs to be resolved, for sure. Definitely needs to be done. Concerns are, obviously, this has to be a concern of yours too, resolving ownership of the other half of the road with the Citrus Fair. One of the concerns, as a school board member, is giving away school property. I know it's going into public hands, but we have to look at making sure we're doing that completely legally. Funding and timeline, actually seeing it develop. We know how long this has been trying to move forward. So once we would agree to do something like this, we'd like some reasonable assurances that it's going to move forward. Part of that concern comes from other past projects we've collaborated on. Some have worked well. The pool project didn't. That's something we monetarily committed to, and it's completely stalled. And it's not in our hands. It's city and county. So that's kind of a red flag for me. And then, another concern is having the skate park right there against the school. That's a concern for us. The liability, attractive nuisance of having that right there. So those are my comments.
Okay. Would anyone like to take the concerns on, as far as the liability issue? City manager?
Sure, absolutely. Well, the, under state law, there is broad indemnification provided through the design process. Since it would be a city park, the indemnification would flow to the city as long as the designers provide that indemnification, which they have. Right? And the language, as the city attorney just so inclined, is specific to skate parks. I think the school board member may be thinking about other types of potential liability associated with the adjacency aspect. I've personally seen where skate parks are located adjacent to school properties and have found that there's a lot of evidence to support that they can be a very compatible use in terms of the school age population that it would be adjacent to. Most closely to us is probably the skate park in Windsor, which is, you know, fairly located, almost immediately adjacent to the junior high school. Obviously, there are responsibilities put on the city in terms of oversight and ensuring that, you know, it's used as designed and that any inappropriate uses are addressed. And then, it's done through park rules and park hours, and it's enforced by the police department. And so, you know, it can be, as much as an amenity, as it can be a liability. And I think sometimes, having that adjacency with the school can make it more of an amenity than a liability. And can be actually a recreational asset to some extent, because it would be a public park.
Could I give a little historical perspective, Vice Mayor? Because you were actually here when City Manager Kayla was here. And he did share the plans for the skate park with us. The difference that, because I asked the board, and it wasn't every member of the board at this time, but asked the board if there were any concerns, and there weren't. But the initial plans were different than this. They were across the street in that little area where Alexander Valley Wellness is. So I think the concern came up when we saw the plans, said, oh, that's in a different spot. And that's where I think, Mr. Addison's speaking to.
And you had mentioned giving school property away. The only thing I see that you're doing is you're giving us a little sliver, and you're not even giving it to us. You're just saying, we can have an easement to get on it, fix it, do the bulbs out, make the intersection better. It's still your land. I mean, we're not looking for you to give us anything.
My understanding was that it becomes city property, and I can't answer that. But my understanding from all our conversations up to now are that it becomes city property.
There are different mechanisms in place. It could be transference in fee title, in which case it could become the, under the ownership of the city. I think what we were currently planning was right-of-way dedication, so that, you know, basically, the area, that 2,400 square feet area that is reflected on the map exhibit would be dedicated as right-of-way to the city. But that's an important distinction, that, you know, if the school board said, you know what, we don't want to own it, you know, then part of our consideration could be, you know, taking fee title, or, you know, again, just seeking the, as an easement to provide for, as a public way. As an example of that is, and it's reflected on the map, is we have a public utility easement that runs east-west on Citrus Fair Drive. It's still a private road. We just have an easement that they've provided, they've granted to the city for sewer-water infrastructure. In this sense, you could look at it the same way, just for, as appropriate public travel way.
Okay, yeah, because that's new. My understanding previously had been that we were doing essentially a lot line adjustment, and that was becoming city property. So that's what I thought the preferred methodology was up until now.
Yeah, so the mechanism to resolve this would be to draft a legal description, and they're usually accompanied with the legal description, a document that defines the purpose of the easement or right-of-way. What we would typically do is ask our council for authorization to accept it. And I think if the school board was so inclined, it would be seeking authorization, the superintendent would be seeking authorization for the school to dedicate it to the city. Again, that's within your purview to do that, but that would be the mechanism. Ultimately, it becomes a document that gets recorded with the county clerk recorder and makes it official.
Madam Mayor? Certainly, go ahead.
Susan?
Yeah.
I was just asking our city attorney that if it becomes an easement, even though it would be your property, the terms could be written at the time when the easement becomes legal. So it would be city responsibility and liability.
I think there's lots of different mechanisms to do this if we want to do it. So I think, I don't know if we should get hung up on exactly, maybe we get direction at the end on what would be preferred, but I know that there are many ways we could do this if we so choose.
Kevin, you want to bail us out? And I mean, can I just ask a clarifying question, just before you start? So we're talking about this, the orange section, right here. So 2,400 square feet? Okay.
I don't know if this is working, but I just wanted to point out, in your staff report, I did a little diagram of what the Wellness Center is proposing as the road that they want to build. And in our discussions with them, and I don't want to speak for them, but a lot of their hesitation on completing a road around the entire site has to do with trying to obtain the easements, and that's why we've really stepped in to try to help out here. I think from our perspective, at least the staff's perspective, we would rather see the road go around the entire site instead of leaving, and if you look at that diagram, you can see where they're proposing to end the road. That's their current proposal right now. So we're really trying to work with them to extend that road, and that's kind of why we're here tonight.
Anyone else from the school board?
I guess, and again, I'm coming in late on this, but is this a parking lot? Is that what this is?
Kevin, or David, you want to take that? So.
And if it is, then I have a slight concern about all of our students walking to and from school and the amount of traffic that would be generated by this parking lot going in and out.
Well, it is a parking lot. It's oversized. We do have a draft SEQA document, which is the environmental review that we undertake for projects like this, that's looking at the parking. That's why, again, we think it's critical to get this road, so there's more ways for cars to get in and out and less traffic on certain roads. Certainly, that document will be available and circulated to the school district for comment, but there's a traffic study with a couple amendments that have been completed that analyze the number of trips that will occur as part of this project.
But does it do it from a student's perspective? Where are students walk? That's what I would be thinking.
No, it does not.
I believe there are sidewalks with the road the whole way, though, correct? On both sides?
Yeah, the Wellness Center is proposing to build sidewalks the whole way, but not the road. And that's part of the current proposal. So there will be a lot more ways for students to get to school. I think staff, the city has been very mindful throughout the design process on Times Square about pedestrian movement, but in particular, movement of schoolchildren. Because we know, you know, at least I know from my own experience, we always seek shortcuts. And the desire was, as our community development director mentioned, putting sidewalks all around, but also through landscaping and appropriate pedestrian crossings. It hopefully will facilitate safe movements of schoolchildren. The extension of Washington Street, for example, includes sidewalks on both the east and west side, along with bike lanes. So a lot of the schoolchildren that maybe are coming from the southwest would be able to basically stay on the sidewalk the entire way. We think that's probably the most safest thing to do. We also know that there are a number of schoolchildren that are located on the east side of South Cloverdale Boulevard and make their way across the crosswalk. And when you're at that corner of Healdsburg intersection with the Boulevard, you have to decide, well, which way are you going to go? There are crosswalks between that intermediate driveway, between the two parcels. One that could take you north, and then head either west or north. Or if you were to go down the, along the south side of the Wellness Center property, there's another crosswalk that can take you across. Or you could get to the end, head north, you're still on the east side of the extension, and then come up to the crosswalk at Citrus Fair Drive. From an efficiency perspective, if there's cars parked there, it's going to make more sense for, we think, for a pedestrian to use those sidewalks. But obviously, that's an individual decision.
I would say, just to support you, David, I think that this would improve path of travel in schools.
And would there be traffic control on that corner in some, like a stop sign?
I think it would likely be a three-way stop. And that's why we really want to work closely with the Citrus Fair to get the right-of-way for Citrus Fair Drive, because right now, we don't have jurisdiction over Citrus Fair Drive, technically. And we don't have jurisdiction over that section of Washington. There's a question whether the city is even able to enforce the California Vehicle Code. There are, I guess, I understand, there are tools and mechanisms to do it, but it's still a challenge and something you have to address through the courts if you're challenged by giving tickets and things like that. So, you know, ideally, it's in the kind of the public realm, and, you know, we can put in the appropriate traffic control measures to address traffic flow.
Any other board questions?
Just really short, to me, it appears like this is, this will make everything much more efficient. I just would like to hear, whether it's from Jeremy or others, do we feel like this plan makes it safer for the students? Simply. Do we feel like this plan will make it safer for the students to get to and from school?
Personally, I would say yes, because we now have sidewalks where we didn't have sidewalks before. I think safety of students getting to school with this plan is, yeah, accurate.
Thank you.
Yeah. And from, there's some evidence to suggest that where there's a potential for safety concerns is relative to traffic interfacing with pedestrians. And right now, there's quite a bit of traffic. And, you know, obviously, we've done a traffic study to evaluate traffic impacts, including looking at it from a traffic safety perspective. And certainly, the experts have said that this would improve that. And I think by possibly reducing some of that, some of the amount of cars by enabling kids to walk and ride their bike, you know, maybe you're reducing that. But obviously, that, you know, you can't say with absolute certainty in all circumstances.
Just real fast, because we're taking a lot of time. At Healdsburg Avenue and Cloverdale Boulevard, we're using our CDVG money to do a nice bulb-out pedestrian-friendly redesign there, and that's already underway. So that should hopefully go to bed next year. So just to.
Okay, first off, I would like to thank you guys for allowing us to have this meeting. It makes it very efficient for all of us, instead of having all of our subcommittee meetings and spending half a year trying to make the same decisions. You talk about amenity versus liability with this road. Know that we, as a board, do support this plan. I hear that. But there are cons to go with the pros. As somebody who lives in this area, I see and spend a lot of time at these intersections. And the kids walk through that lot that is empty currently. They don't walk down the Boulevard and across the sidewalks. So as we extend, or if we were to extend Washington all the way through, you're now creating two more places for the kids to cross traffic when they're on their way to and from school. One to two more. So it actually has cons to go with the pros. I love the fact of the sidewalks, it's safer, they're not walking across private property. I get it all. Just know that, looking at it from a student perspective, they get about 150 yards of no traffic versus when this is completed. traffic versus when this is completed. If it's completed, you're now getting about 150 yards of through traffic. And if it's not controlled heavily by police, we know that with a street this long, it will become a nice tradeway for people to drive on. You talked about Windsor having their skate park next to their middle school. As somebody that used to work for an agency that helped control that, there was issues there. They do spend a lot of time having to police that, and so it becomes a burden on the police department when you're having basically a mesh fence between the school district and a skate park. I'm not saying it's a bad thing all the time, but I'm saying it's something we have to think about when our kids have access to the edge of our school property, and now you have adults, because the skate park's not controlled by age. So you have very good access that we can't always monitor, or we have to spend, spend money to put another person to monitor that location. In doing all of this, it, it surprised me when you said that you wanted us to pay for part of the drainage. We, as a district, don't have money to pay for that drainage. We started this project back in 2014, when we as well did a full write-up of what we wanted to do. We made our full master plan and started this process for our gym and our remodeling of our school district. And so we've been putting money into this and designing this for a long time as well. And so we understand your frustration with us coming to you now, but like they've stated, we had saw the skate park in a different location, and that's what we all supported, because even though it's 65 feet of asphalt, it's a separation between the skate park and, and the students. It's, it's just a little bit of a barrier that, that stops the communication, stops the things that can go on when you put children next to adults or, or anyone that wants to enter that skate park. And I understand that we can control it by times, but that's also very difficult a year or two years or three years down the road. They, they don't want to be babysitters. The police department is not a babysitter. The amount of traffic that will come down this road, that's going to create something that's great for the public to drive up and down Washington Street. It will become a detriment to our students trying to cross in that area, I think, because you're, you're adding more cars. Even though, even though they get just one turn, it's, at least at that point, it's bottlenecked, it's slowed down. It may be a little bit of a delay at this point. So there's pros and cons on everything with that. Exits from the parking lot. I'm not understanding exactly where those exits are. How do they exit onto Washington Street? Is that what the little square is in between the, it's like the driveline down the middle of the parking lot? Is that what that is? Mr. Kelly?
On, on the map you show that you have the parking lot, there's, in between, it says on Lot B. Down the center of that parking lot, from the west, or east of the west, is that where it would connect to Washington Street, right in there, basically on the Boulevard of that road?
Where's on the south side that they come out of the parking lot?
It's, the cars currently, with the way the parking lot is designed, would, would exit to the south onto the private access road. At, at, at least that's what it's referred to on, on the exhibit. We are working with the Wellness Center and, and more particularly, the Citrus Fair to enable access onto Citrus Fair Drive up in kind of the, there's a, there's, there's kind of a driveway, and it's hard to see it here, where there's no lines.
The one on the north.
Parking spaces.
The north side.
So that traffic could enter or exit in that location. We think that's important, and that, and that's why, part of why we're pursuing this effort to secure the right-of-way, and I think that's what's, what's shown on Exhibit B. We do have the existing PUE, but we'd at least like to obtain the, in a minimum, the five-foot right-of-way from, from the Citrus Fair so that we have a full half-section of Citrus Fair Drive, so that it facilitates that ingress and egress. So in essence, if a traveler to the Wellness Center might come through that intersection and be able to take that left-hand turn into, into the Wellness Center and park and not actually have to go out to one of the other...
But you are planning on having an ingress and egress from Washington Street into that parking lot, basically, even if it's off of that private road? That's how you're, that's not, that's not any plan to be gated off or anything to keep people from driving onto Washington Street from the parking lot?
There was no, no current plan to cut off that, that access.
So we'll be taking on a portion of that population as well, that traffic?
There is, and it, it wasn't included in your packet, but there, there is a full traffic study that was performed, and we, we recently did an amendment to it to reflect, you know, should we not improve Washington Street heading north to see what the impacts are, if it was all moving that traffic south? But that, that study is available. It's going to be released as part of the SEQA document in the near future, but we can, we can, we can certainly share that traffic study with the superintendent, and he can, you know, share it with, with the school board, if you'd like to look at that more, more carefully. And I think as, as the community development director and assistant city manager, Kevin, indicated, when a, when a SEQA document is released for public review, it's usually done for a 30-day period of time. And I, I think the school district should and would be welcome to review that document and, and comment on it, because there may be other things in, in, from an environmental perspective that you might, might be concerned about, you know, whether it's, whether it's, I think traffic obviously is kind of top of mind, but there may be other, other things, you know, patrolling, patrolling the parking lot. I mean, you know, it would be really in the purview of the school district to, to review what those issues are and determine what's appropriate to comment on, so.
So like I said, I, I'm, as a board, we support this project. I think this plan is a fairly well-done plan. I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's how I feel about it, and I think the board supports that. I think my only concern, like I voiced, is the amount of traffic and then the location of that skate park. Is there anything that we could do to move that back to where you had it before?
Yeah, just...
Nothing to do with, the skate park has to do with the, just the location of where it started out across the street or we supported it, and now it's against the school, where we've created a, basically a focal point for our new district, for our school, and now it'll be blocking it.
Just to add to that, you know, we had previously looked at a plan and informally approved it where that skate park was right there on that blank triangle, and then to have it come back and have it moved right up against a school fence, I, I have to then have some caution about, well, if I approve the next thing, what's the next change going to come back? So that was, really caught us by surprise to see it moved like that.
Mayor, Council, and Board, I, I, I can certainly understand that perspective. A little bit of background, as I, as I shared with Council, the initial effort for design of Times Square was really kind of a, a concept, plan or master plan, and it did identify the extension, again, as a concept of Washington Street. Obviously, when you really start doing the civil engineering design process is where the, the, the details matter, and it was determined because the way, the way, the shape of that property is not a perfect square. It's got kind of a bulb out that butts the, the school property. The civil engineers determined that the, the radius of the curve of Washington Street would not support proper traffic flow, and so that's where you see kind of this gentle S-curve. And, and, and as a result of that, the, it basically naturally shifted kind of from, on the concept plan, to a very detailed design in an engineered parcel map where the, the property would be for the skate park. And, and, and I would not expect, given the additional design work that's been done by not only the engineer for the Wellness Center, but our, 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 our designer for the skate park, our civil engineering team with Brolgie and Race, that there's going to be much, if any, changes from what you see on the exhibit. I mean, these are, we're at that point where, you know, we can, we can move forward with, with construction, and it's about securing the necessary legal easements and rights away to facilitate those improvements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David, what type of measures can we put on that skate park? Cypress trees down along that fence? What can we do to separate it from the school?
Screening.
And to ensure, and I, I, I have to agree with the school board, I, I really have concerns about young adults skateboarding during the day and the kids are playing on the other side of the fence. I mean, you know, not, I, I guess unfortunately, we do have people that would take advantage of that situation, but what can we do to make that facility more secure?
That, that's a great question, Vice Mayor, and, and it, it can be done collaboratively, or it could be done independently. For example, if the school district wanted to have a certain treatment in terms of fencing or improvement, they certainly could do so. You could have a solid wall, you could have a high steel fencing, or you could have landscaping. The, the typical tradition with skate parks is to have them be fenced so that there's a, with a gate that's closed when the park is closed. You know, unlike maybe a true typical neighborhood or community park, which even though you might have park hours, it's kind of open. I think the, the skateboard designers had expressed an interest in, you know, kind of keeping it more open and, and so it's more inviting, but if there were concerns about safety and access, you know, fencing and landscaping would certainly be appropriate. We hadn't got to that level of design detail on what, you know, what kind of fencing you might want to see around the skate park, but that's something that, you know, staff, when we bring, we're going to bring forward, I think the plan was to bring forward the skate park design to the council to have your, you know, to, for your review and input, and that'd be something you could certainly look at more carefully, or, you know, and provide feedback on, is, is how do you want this, the skate park to interface with, with, with the school property and what kind of, what kind of fencing?
Yes. Um, one?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. You know, the skate park is something that the community has been working for, for a long time. I don't think anybody involved in this planning will jeopardize the skate park in any way. To the contrary, I believe that all adults and all youth in Cloverdale would be very cognizant of the effort and would be very protective of this space that has been worked for, for a long time. I also believe that down the road, we will have a police station there too, if people are so concerned, but the same thing is that we don't need to think of the police as a babysitter for anybody in the city of Cloverdale, because we are trusting that we continue to develop a citizenship of, of responsible young adults and adults. If we observe the hours of operation of the skate park, it would be in collaboration with the school and making sure that there are not activities that would jeopardize the safety, not only of schoolchildren, but any of the citizens that live in that vicinity. I live in that vicinity, and I would be one of those people making sure that safety and respect is always at, at the top of the line. And, and again, it is something that the community has worked for, for so long, that they're not going to do anything to get it closed or not even move forward. And, and then again, you know, real estate, especially in a small town like ours, is, is limited, and very limited to get the appropriate facilities for our youngsters. So I really don't think that it's going to be a detrimental thing to have a skate park in that location, and if it becomes a, a park, there are rules for parks. And, and again, I believe that we will take care of that park, just like we're doing with open space, which is really, I mean, it's not to the same proximity of the school, but it has proven to be a very good place for the community.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add? I just, not if I could. So we do have several other agenda items.
I, I think that our school board, respectfully, as I respect your opinion, I think that I disagree with it, that you will have people that don't abide by our laws. That's why we have police departments and police forces and law enforcement. So as much as we have people that we'll respect, you'll have ones that don't. And it's an unfortunate thing, but that's why we have what we have. So you say that you've lived near it, I know you do, and if you saw somebody that wasn't abiding by the laws or the rules, you would be calling the police department. So you have to remember that there, they, I don't mean it in a derogatory way to say babysitting, but they would have to for quite a while, be paying attention to that, and it'd just be one more thing on, on to their plate.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I, Board Chair, I, I agree, because I, and I think what you're saying is, is that we, in, this has to be planned properly. So I appreciate that. It sounds like there is general support for the ingress and egress on the, the project, and I really appreciate that. And I think some, some details still need to be, to, to need to be ironed out, but I, I really do think we need to have a further workshop once we get farther down the road to really, to, to really discover what the, the concerns are, because we're, we get, we're going to get one shot to get this design right, and there's no substitute for good planning upfront, making sure that we really have a layout that we like, that we really have the drainage that works, that really makes sure that the, the road is safe and that the, I would, actually, I'd love, love to hear further information, but we're, we're putting the cart before the horse, as to the, the traffic calming that would be available on Washington Street. I think this is a really vital project, actually, for our community, because we, it just, we've just been half-assing it all over the place, and this, this intersection is an example of, oh, sorry, I'm on cold medicine, so I'm going to use that term. But this is just, this is just, I mean, when you walk down there, or, you know, you ride your bike down there, it's kind of embarrassing. It's just sort of, there's, nothing, nothing really flows, nothing really works, and what this is going to do is open up that whole area to further development, which is going to increase our tax base, and that helps us and that helps you. So that's kind of how I, I look at it. So it sounds like we have, you know, some consensus around the general idea and the general plan for the, the development, and I, I think we would need a further workshop at some point, maybe at the, and bring all the engineers together, maybe at the Dets Hall, maybe at, you know, Senior Center, something like that, where we can, you know, put up what our ideas and our hopes are, because this is really an opportunity for the school district and the city to work together and really come up with a great plan, because this is the heart, this is one of, you know, this is the heart of our, our city and our heart of our downtown. So it's really important that this has flow and that it's safe and that their concerns are, are addressed and our traffic needs are met, so. And if you're not, if no one objects, I think that we've just...
Could I ask one question?
Certainly.
So, as this is an open meeting, and this is one of the few times I can get direction from a full board, there's three things that we're looking at really from a school district perspective. It's Washington Street in between us and Citrus Fair, as having the city take over management of that. The part of our property, the 2,400 square feet, I believe you said, roughly?
Mm-hmm.
That we would be considering offering up as an easement or some way of allowing the city to use that, and the drainage issue that we were talking about, which I don't know if really is, I need direction on that from the school board, but...
Take that back to your engineer and just get clarification, yeah.
But are we prepared to have direction, for me, to work with the city on either Washington Street or half of it and the 2,400 square foot? Are you prepared to give me direction on what we want to do with the school district, or should we hold off?
I think we should have one more workshop to see how we can work with the city on our needs and our wants before we say that we're willing to give anything up or do anything different.
So as far as the time is concerned with the development of Times Square, what does that timeframe look like, City Manager?
Well, the environmental document is ready to be released, and we'll be coordinating that fairly quickly.
I know time is of the essence for you guys, that's why I was...
Right.
We are very much in support and would like to get this one done.
We, we understand, I mean, there, there's, there's strong interrelationship with what we're trying to do with respect to get the right-of-way, so you facilitate... we're trying to do with respect to, uh, get the right of way so you facilitate, uh, appropriate legal movement of traffic, but, but then the skate park, and I think, if I understand, the mayor's comment was, you know, once the design of the skate park's brought back, that we could, we could schedule another workshop, uh, with, with, with the school board to, you know, discuss the, uh, the, the interface of the, the skate park and the, and the school, the school, the Washington School, um, because I think there's, there's adequate time to, uh, enable that to, to happen. Probably more critical from a timeline for the city is, uh, getting agreement on the right of way, um, because that will, uh, have long-lasting impacts as that project moves, as the wellness project moves forward.
David, is the right of way both? Is the right of way both Washington Street and the 2,400 square foot? Is that considered the right of way, or is it just Washington? It's both? Okay.
Yeah, I would like to get a chance to review the traffic study. We, we talked about it. I haven't seen it, so I think it's important to see that.
That can be part of the workshops, and Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I, I kind of like to know what the school board's, um, biggest concern is about this. Is it the, um, easement on the 2,400 square feet? Is it skateboard park? Is it the traffic? Because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, um, you know, I'm, I'm just about ready to tell the, um, Wellness Center to go ahead and just do half a street, and, um, we can wait on this later or it never gets, never gets built out to fruition. It's just the way it's going to be.
And, and, and staff is, is, uh, is planning accordingly for that option, uh, and we, we know we're going to, uh, there, there's considerable desire for that project to move forward, uh, and, and that's why we're trying to proactively address this as quickly.
So, Vice Mayor, could I answer that question or maybe help a little bit? Um, I think our number one concern is not the 2,400 square feet. That is not, that is not our number one concern. I think that we are very open to that, I'll say at this point. It, it's, it's the location of the skate park and how it coincides with our new buildings that we're doing, and it's the traffic. And so, what I would ask for time to be more efficient for all of us, so we can hopefully get it done in one meeting, is that we have alternatives to a couple of different things. Just open-minded ideas of what, if, if there's something else you could do different, when you, when you talk about designing the skate park, maybe have a couple of different areas or designs that we can come up with, that we could work together with, so that we can really get it done.
How would we do, how could we do a joint design for their, um, their gym as well as the skateboard park? How, what, what, what would we need to do?
Yeah, I, so we, uh, just, just so the school boards are aware, we, we, we did engage with the school district on the design of the skate park and, uh, in terms of, you know, recommending or, uh, inquiring about their involvement in the design process. And, uh, at thi- at this point, our contract with our skate park designer, you know, was to deliver a, a final draft design. Uh, we, we will probably have to reengage with them to do more, uh, more work and come up with, you know, to develop some more design options, uh, but that's certainly something we, we, we can, we can work within to, to do, uh, particularly if there's critical feedback on, on how that interfaces with the, with the school, the school property.
Are we in a position?
Madam Mayor, sorry, I'll just, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, are we in a position to go ahead and say, yeah, you can take the 2,400? It's up to you. And then we'll, we'll work out.
What I recommend is, what I recommend is that perhaps you give direction to Jeremy to work with, um, with city staff to kind of come up with some, some different scenarios, and then we meet again and talk about, you know, okay.
Yeah, my thought was, we give our thoughts and concerns to our staff, you guys give your thoughts and concerns to your staff, and they come back with, here's, here's the two or three options we came up with, and off we go.
Also, I would like to know if it's possible in this future workshop to have the architect and design, designer of the skate park to be present, so, and, and I don't even know if it's possible, uh, financially to look at possible barriers, vegetative barriers to, if we were to keep the skate park in that location.
Yeah, I think that's important feedback, that thus far in the design process hasn't been provided to the designer, but, uh, you know, that's why we were scheduled to bring it forward to the council, uh, and so we'll have to, we'll have to work with the skate park designer on how, how to, you know, for, I, but really to, uh, facilitate additional workshop discussions on the design process, I think is really what, what we're hearing in terms of feedback today, yeah.
Madam Mayor, thank you, uh, and this will be my last, uh, comment, thank you, um, because we still have four items to go.
Yes, we do. We're going to move this along.
But I, I just wanted to address the issue of not having the money to do the drainage and not, um, having the desire to share some of that. As it stands now, um, if we do nothing on that intersection, you're going to have to move your drainage somewhere, uh, if I'm understanding it correctly, because it can't continue to dump onto the Times Square.
And that's one of the differences of opinions we have at this point, so that's what we need to argue.
Yeah, I need to just ask you to take that back to your engineer and get clarification on that.
Yeah, completely agree.
So, at this point, I believe the council, is the council comfortable with directing staff to, uh, work on next steps, kind of come up with different scenarios, and if it's appropriate, we can schedule another work, another workshop at a later date? All right, great, do you have direction you need?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything else? All right, with that, um, could someone please go find Councilmember Brigham, and we'll move on to item number two, discussion related to crossing guard services and stop signs at the intersection of North Cloverdale Boulevard and North Street.
Ma- Mayor, Council, and, and if it's okay with, with, uh, the school board, uh, we'd like to take up kind of item two and item three kind of concurrently. Item two is crossing guard, uh, services, uh, at the intersection of North Cloverdale Boulevard and North Street, uh, and item three is discussion of an MOU for a school resource officer. Uh, there, there are some connections between the two, um, and I think, uh, i- i- if it's okay with, with all of you, we'll, uh, I'm going to turn this over to the police chief, and he's going to, going to cover that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the school board. Uh, before you, is a staff report, uh, regarding a discussion related to the crossing guard services stop sign at the intersections of North Cloverdale and specifically North Street. A little back history and I'll be brief. The Cloverdale Police Department has been running the crossing guard program for the past 20 years. It has been somewhat of a challenge to consistently maintain staffing, um, crossing guard staff, more specifically in that North Street, North Cloverdale, uh, crossing location. Up until, uh, a few years back, um, there was a cooperative agreement was revised that, um, provided a shared cost with the school and the Cloverdale, city of Cloverdale. However, that didn't negate the challenges of consistently keeping a crossing guard staff, um, online. So, what would happen is we would often use a community services officer, police officers and/or sergeant or anybody available to try to go out there and perform the crossing guard, um, duties when available. The challenges with that were the community service officer was spending an enormous amount of time there in the morning and in the afternoon, taking away from her regular duties like fingerprinting, abandoned vehicles, um, other duties like, uh, property and evidence and animal control, which keep her very busy. Additionally, officers were taken off the street and mostly in the morning until the cover unit came in, that officer was by themselves at the morning crossing guard section, um, presenting a challenge if a call were to come out, um, midway across that crosswalk, we'd have a little bit of a problem. So, those presented challenges, uh, and they continue to be challenges. When the officers weren't available, we often would use a sergeant as well, um, and these things, of course, came with some increased costs since we didn't have crossing guards. And it started to place a burden on the police department, and just to give you an idea, for the fiscal year seven, uh, 1819, just the community service officer, the two police officers and the sergeant alone spent 322 hours performing crossing guard duties there. Additionally, the 535.5 hours were from a crossing guard. There was a total of 871 hours of crossing guard duties performed. So, that's a substantial amount of hours devoted by police staff, either community services officer and/or, uh, police officers. From being, the minute I got hired here, one of the, uh, things David brought to my attention was the school crossing guard program and thinking of ideas and ways to maybe try to remedy it. I know the school's been challenged with trying to help.
Chief Ferguson, before you go on to your plans, I know your next part, just to speak to the financial part, just so my board understands one aspect of it.
Sure.
Uh, it's a shared cost and, and it's done differently by the city than by the school district, so when we substitute a position, we do it at the position's rate. And so, um, the city doesn't do it that way, they do it at the person's rate, meaning, you know, sometimes we were paying $128 an hour for a crossing guard. That wasn't realized, uh, until sometime that this was happening, and at that point, uh, I would get a text message that says, hey, we have nobody. Once we realized that this cost was actually $128 an hour, we'd get a text in the morning and say, we have nobody, do you want to try to staff it? Um, I really didn't want to pay $128 an hour, uh, for the, the position, so we would try to pull people from Jefferson often to, to go out there and do it. So, I just say, it, $18,000 cross, cost for a crossing guard was the district's portion, uh, because of the increased rates, and it's done, it's been, you know, I think it's important you know that, because it's very different than the way do, we do things and the way I understand it until sometime during the process. Sorry to interrupt, Chief.
No, no problem, sir. So, moving forward, uh, so I would start driving in, in the mornings, coming through the location, and what I started to notice was the, the school crossing guard. I started to notice the traffic behavior. They were very disciplined at this particular hour coming in, in the morning, and they were disciplined because when the crossing guard was there, they're simply holding a stop sign, halting traffic while they move people across the intersection. So, my first thought was, if it's a stop sign that's creating this and, and motorists are being disciplined to do it, why aren't we looking at actually possibility of permanently placing stop signs at this intersection to help relieve with the issue of the challenges of the crossing guard in this, in this location? So, I went back just to, um, just to confirm some other factors. I wanted to see what traffic looked like in this intersection over a period of time, so I went back to January of 2010 until about September 12th of this year. There were 72 general traffic signs in this intersection, um, 46 of those resulted in warnings, um, 16 of those resulted in citations. Uh, I do want to indicate that there's some indication of there. The unsafe speed was hard to determine because of the way the officers were clearing that was either by moving citation or moving violation, but didn't specifically address speed. Um, and those were hard to come back, because we only have a legal requirement to hold citations back two years. So, I'm positive that speeding violations were higher than that, and to give you one example, there's, uh, two, three citations on the back here that I looked, that I was able to find that showed, uh, speeding, speed in that area at 37, 37 and 40 miles an hour, and they were clocked on radar. Why that's relevant is because, uh, I took a look at the, the most recent engineering and traffic study that was submitted by Whitlock and Web, Wineburner Transportation back in, uh, March 28th of 2013. In that particular area from Middlestat South to Third Street, the recommended, the, excuse me, the, uh, 85th percentile of traffic showed 32 miles an hour. The recommended posted speed limit in that area is 30. However, after you cross the bridge, you become into a school zone, so it actually technically is 25 miles an hour until you clear the school zone where there's a sign posted in the school zone at the, uh, Queens United Church there. So, in theory, depending on where they put those measuring devices for the traffic survey, you could have even been excessive in the 25 mile an hour zone. So, those three citations that I was able to find show the speed quite excessive, uh, in that area. So, those were other factors that made me wonder if this was a possibility and how do we go about making that happen? Uh, I think it is relative. Uh, I think one of the factors is you have a substantial amount of speed once you get off the highway at 45, climbing up to the speed li- uh, the city limit is 40, and then as you crest the hill coming southbound, it becomes 30, and again, 30 just, um, right at Middlestat and then drops into 25 after the bridge. So, you have some, a variety of different speed adjustments, but ultimately it comes fairly quickly off that hill, and then there's no stop, um, adjusting at all until you get into Third Street unless the, um, the school crossing guard is there and it's that time of day. So, those were factors that, uh, I considered in proposing this, uh, idea. I'm not sure at this point if we want to stop and discuss that real quick, but move forward in how it correlates to item number three.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and-
Okay. So, after discussing this, we did address it at a subcommittee meeting, um, and, um, there was some discussion to have them installed, and it was best to meet with Jeremy, um, and have a discussion with him about it. So, I met with Jeremy, uh, about two weeks later and discussed this proposal with him, and in the process of doing so, I explained my desire and my goals to try to get a school resource officer at our school district. I think it's very important, and it was certainly one of my goals coming into the, uh, police department here. I know they did not have a full-time member here, part-time over the years, um, and I thought it was, uh, important to try to get that in place. So, in our discussions, um, you had men, Jeremy had already mentioned the difference in, in the pricing and, and what it costs to, a shared cost for us to staff that using sergeants, officers and CSOs. So, I came to him and said, you know, what's the potential that we could look at a school resource officer and potentially with the cost savings from the school's side of that crossing guard, could we look at potentially that, that shared cost for a school resource officer from the school? This is all, mind you, very elementary in the process. It's talks that we had, they, we, I worked on a draft MOU, but it's only a draft at this point, hasn't even been presented to them, but it just brings out some points as to what we could expect both sides from the school as well as the police department, um, for a school resource officer. But more importantly, what was the school's desire and would they be willing to, um, have some of that shared cost with the offset cost that the crossing guard program would no longer bear on them? So, that's ultimately where we, we stood in this and, and I think our-
I could speak to it as well as you want.
Yeah, if you want, I thought our talks were good and I thought there was some progress made, and I think our ideas are similar in trying to put a school resource officer and the need for it, um, if you want to comment on that.
Sure, so after we spoke, I actually, one of the people I spoke to was here. Uh, I went over to Jefferson to speak about the prospect of just having a stop sign, uh, versus a crossing guard, and it was pretty clear that our staff felt we still needed a crossing guard there. So, I then spoke to the principal and said, is there any way we could staff this? What would the cost be? And so, for the district to staff that position, it's roughly $3,900. And so, on, with the idea that the city would be investing heavily, uh, with getting an SRO on campus, um, it would be under the purview of the board, obviously, to say, would we want, would we be willing to take on a $3,900 cost to then have a crossing guard there? Because it was pretty clear to me from staff that I spoke to, we would still desire to have a crossing guard there, that would become our responsibility.
For what year?
The morning, the morning crossing guard.
For the school year?
School year.
A year?
The year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so instead of the $18,456, actually, the $36,912 it costs to have it this way, it would actually cost us $3,900. And so, um, the decision for the school district would be, do we apply this $18,454 to potentially get an SRO? And again, none of this has been worked out, um, but it's in theory, right? We take these dollars, instead of applying them to a crossing guard, we apply it to an SRO, and then the school district would have to take on the $3,900 to then still staff a crossing guard at our rate. So, the increased cost of the district would be roughly $4,000 to continue to have a crossing guard.
I think, you know, what we're looking for here tonight is just direction to, do you support the, the idea, and, um, we, it, obviously the details need to be worked out, so, uh, do you feel that you have enough information to, to ask any technical questions at this time before I open it up to public?
What portion of the salary would, would the school district be covering versus the, the city, I guess?
Oh, yeah, just, just, just for, uh, clarification, the, the cost that Superintendent Decker referred to, the $36,000, uh, was the cost of providing those services for fiscal year 1819. We're now in the current year, so there's, there's, anticipated that there, there's a real-time accounting for the, the, the actual cost of the city providing those services and the way the cooperative agreement is written is that it's split 50/50. Uh, so, we haven't done the tabulation for the current fiscal year yet, we're now, obviously, uh, five, about five months into the fiscal year, uh, so the, the $36,000 is what were costs that the city incurred, uh, during the last fiscal year and, or asking for reimbursement under the terms of the cooperative agreement. What the chief is proposing is kind of more forward-looking, is how can we reduce costs going forward, uh, and- uh, and, you know, reduce both the, the school district's costs of providing, uh, crossing guard services, also reduce the costs to the city, uh, but likewise, taking that time that we're otherwise dedicating in critical patrol staff, uh, out doing crossing guard services to actually more, what we perceive is more valuable service of being in the schools. Uh, you know, certainly, there, there's a value to having an officer, uh, out, you know, i- i- uh, providing traffic control. But we certainly think it's much more higher value to be able to kind of take that service and place it in the schools. And, and I think what we are looking at in terms of an MOU, it would be, you know, the, 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 the school would still, the school district would still be responsible for a portion of that cost of the, of that school resource officer. But it's, it's really about rededication of that time to a more high-value, what we perceive as the more high-value needed and demanded services and, and, and then trying to address the traffic issue through, uh, you know, physical, physical traffic stops coupled with also, uh, you know, enforcement and appropriate notification measures, uh, to see if, if, you know, that would be an effective, uh, a, a tool for that particular, that particular intersection. Because, um, uh, uh, one point that I wanted to share with the council and the school board is, well, Cloverdale's the only city in Sonoma County that provides, um, crossing guard services. It's usually provided, uh, by the school district and often through, through volunteers. And we've always been challenged from a patrol side and a police department management side to make sure that we've got adequate police staffing, um, and, and that's been the, the kind of the challenge in some instances where if there's a critical patrol issue, uh, that arises during those crossing guards, they, they actually have to leave, uh, because, you know, depending on the priority of that, of the, of, of an incident. So, we're, we're, we're trying to figure out how can we address this as comprehensively as possible, uh, in, in a way that is, uh, beneficial for the school district and, and, and the city, so.
And I would say, I personally think it's a, it's a great plan. I, I love the forward-thinking. I'm very appreciative of the fact that you came to me with the idea. I think the question for you is, we, we need to know what the cost sharing would be, right? My understanding was it would be around this number hypothetically. Again, I know that thing's on paper, it's just a discussion. But if it was around this number and then increased cost to us beyond this number would be the thirty-nine hundred because we'd have to staff. That's how I thought it might work out. And I'm not sure if you're prepared to really dive into that, but I think that's probably the critical question for our board. And I should also say in, to the city's point, the agreement, um, can be severed with thirty days' notice. So, if they cho, so chose, they could say, we're no longer providing the crossing guard services and give us thirty days' notice. And I know that they don't want to do that. And I know we discussed that. And they don't even want that to be a threat. It's just something that's important for you to, I think, know.
Jeremy, I think the amount that we're willing to spend is something that will be taken on as you guys work out the, the details.
Sure.
And maybe we can just kind of move this one on a little bit more and do that in, in a separate meeting.
If you're comfortable with that.
If you're okay with that.
Are you comfortable with the concept and the theory of all of this?
I think the school resource officer is one of the most important things we could do. I thought that for a long time. It scares me frankly that we don't have one.
I agree with its importance and that's why we're here trying to establish something.
Any other clarification or technical questions before I open it up for public comment?
Just one, Madam Mayor. Jeremy, uh, you referred to that dollar amount being the morning crossing. What about the afternoon one?
Uh, for us or for, I'm not sure. Is this reflective of the morning and afternoon?
It's, it's all, all.
It's all of it. And so, now I'm gonna have to remember. I think I had Patty run these, but it was a while ago, guys. I'm sorry. I know when I was looking, we had tried to figure out a way we could staff the afternoon and the morning. And really, it's not about money for us. It's just about people just like you guys.
Right.
And so, we think we may have somebody who could do this in the afternoon. We're not sure. But we really think we have somebody in the morning for sure. And we'd be willing to try to figure this out because this is an important item for us. Uh, I think that's where we're at.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, you do not want the stop signs at all? You, you don't want the stop signs at all?
No, no, no. We do want the stop signs.
You do want them, okay.
Yes. And then, we would also take on having somebody out there manning.
In addition to?
And it, to not expecting you to do that. But we would take on that monetarily potentially.
Yeah. I, I think the stop signs are a no-brainer. I think spending thirty-six thousand dollars to man a crosswalk is not a good use of public funds. And I think we could way better apply that to a resource officer. And we'll have to grapple with, as a school district, paying somebody at a much lower rate than paying a police officer at full rate to man it as well. But I think the stop signs is a great idea.
Yeah. Chief, Chief, I, I, I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it anyhow. Once the stop signs are installed, I'm sure we're gonna have a patrol car sitting there in the mornings and afternoons.
Yeah, so.
If just with the lights on and.
Yeah, the proposed plan is certainly. Stop signs there that haven't existed before. But as I mentioned, there's a level of discipline that the traffic already has in the morning and the afternoon based on the crossing guard. But we would certainly put out social media. We would do everything in our power to alert the community of the stop signs. We would also place patrol vehicles there so that people are aware. Uh, and we would take whatever measures the city felt necessary to alert no, uh, people. You already have the flashing signs coming in that the school zones there. So, there's always some things in place. Some crosswalk markings are already in place. So, we would do our part, social media eyes to alert the public and notify them and be present for a while until everybody gets used to this. We understand it's a former, basically, highway into the city. And sometimes I think motorists forget that, um, you know, that it's no longer the main highway into the city. So, we, we'll do our part to, uh, to be visible and to notice the community.
I would, I just would like to add, I'm in favor of the stop signs. I would even propose adding them where we also have the other crossing guard at Hillsburg Avenue and the Boulevard, right there at that intersection where, um, there is, it's very difficult, um, in that intersection too because of the cross-traffic. We only have stop signs east and west and not north and south. But I'm just, that's, to go even further with stop signs, I would propose that.
Mayor, Council, on, 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 on that, on that, uh, comment, uh, one of the things staff will be bringing forward is a, uh, proposed redesign of the, uh, intersection at, uh, Hillsburg Avenue and the Boulevard. Uh, we are currently planning a, uh, project that we, it falls under kind of the perspective of, uh, uh.
Traffic calming?
Traffic calming, uh, 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 smart, smart street design where there'll be, uh, bulb-outs uh, with, uh, high flashing visible, uh, placards, um, that would, will be a indicator for traffic that there's, you know, someone using that crosswalk. Uh, and thi, this is kind of the, the, um, new technology that's being, uh, uh, treated in, in lieu of the, uh, in-ground lights which tend to have a very, um, poor maintenance record. Uh, and when, I mean, that might be something that we could, uh, bring for as part of the next, uh, joint workshop is to present that design and overview, uh, and, and look at, you know, whether the, uh, additional, uh, stop signs uh, are, are a feasible, uh, traffic control measure in that particular location.
And before we get, um, any farther, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for public comment. Would anyone like to come forward and comment on this item? And please state your name for the record.
So, I think it's great that you are discussing the school resource officer. That's very important for our district. Uh, I remember when we used to have one and I really support that. I know a lot of people do in the community. Um, I do remember there was discussion prior to Chief Ferguson about there was money set aside that was, um, for the, the position of school resource officer and/or hiring another officer so that the department was not short-staffed, so to speak. And it's never really been further discussed where that money's been allocated. Um, I think the school is pretty much on target by having a crossing guard in the morning and the afternoon. Obviously, due to the age of the, the kids that go to Jefferson, they can't obviously comprehend what goes on and they need that direction. And I also agree at Washington that there's a lot of them that, they're just not at that maturity level. Um, so, I think that's really important that we do, even though you are proposing the stop signs, which is a fabulous idea, I do think that it's very important between all of you that you figure out how to get crossing guards there. I have kids in both of those schools, so. And I know that they just kind of, they would dart out, not even pay attention. Um, I do also think it's important on top of the crossing guards and the stop signs, as you already mentioned, that there is a unit or two or whatever there for traffic violators, um, and the additional signage, I think, as, uh, City Manager mentioned. So, um, I think with that, all those ideas that you have, just keep all that in mind. Um, and hopefully, there can be some resolution as far as those intersections go. And thank you.
Yeah. All right. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? All right. Well, seeing none, I'll bring it back. It sounds like we have some general support for, um, and for these two items. Does, would anyone else have any other comments or questions? So, do you, does staff feel like you have enough direction going forward? It sounds like there's support for, um, the MOU as related to the school resource officer. We need a little more homework on that as well as the stop signs at the intersection of North Cloverdale Boulevard. And if we do, when we, when we do hold another workshop, it sounds like we want to rope in the Washington, or the, um, Hillsburg. It's the Hillsburg intersection, correct?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Just one quick comment if you don't mind. Um, I would like to just maybe remind city staff that there was, uh, when we put in the dispensaries and marijuana, uh, manufacturing in Cloverdale, part of the tax money was said that it was gonna go towards education and prevention. And so, I know it's only about a hundred thousand dollars that the city is, uh, getting from that right now. But that is money that could be used in this direction, just to keep it in mind.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right.
I have a question. If, if it does happen, what is the timing of stop signs being put in place? And as well as having the resource officer program at?
Yeah, this is, what, well, yeah, what needs to happen and what's the timing on that? About those items?
Mayor, Board Member, if I, if I can, I, I think, uh, and I just want to call the directions. This, the city engineer, our, our public works staff, uh, could fairly quickly, uh, install stop signs in my, my accurate, uh, city engineer and, and make that assessment that, um, with, with support of the council, the board, we could, we could move forward with getting the, the stop signs in place. Uh, on the funding for the school resource officer, uh, in terms of next steps, what I will, will anticipate is, uh, the chief providing, uh, the superintendent, uh, a draft MOU for review of, for his review as well as your legal counsel's review. And ultimately, bringing that forward, uh, for, for, uh, the board's review. And likewise, we would need to bring it forward through the city processes, which usually involves, uh, a, a two-touch process starting with review by our, um, Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee, followed by council review and approval. So, what we, we would want to seek is kind of a, a joint review process. Uh, and, uh, I mean, it, it, I, I think it, you know, just depending on how quickly with the holidays coming up, we could bring that forward. Uh, we could have something probably in place, uh, in, in the early start of, uh, two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, January.
And could I offer one point of clarification? We actually do still have an agreement for an SRO between the school district and, and city. It hasn't gone away. The, there's a misconception that the school district pulled out of the agreement. What we did is we eliminated the classes being taught by the SRO. We, but many of the duties were still on there, but they were short-staffed and had to often pull that sworn officer to other duties as I understand things. And so, that's why sometimes might seem like we don't have an agreement with the city anymore regarding an SRO. And I, I don't know if we need to expound upon that or not, but.
There's current language in the existing cooperative agreement that outlines that. To my understanding, as it stands today, our only activities that take place at the school are teaching the Great Dare using a, a, an officer twice a week. Um, and that's what we do as far as that's concerned. And, and that's the only thing we really perform right now under a school resource officer language.
Yeah. So, I think that just in the, the history of this, the past, it was just, uh, it was just done differently, right? So, the only change were the classes. But, um, I think it was just, you know, the way they were put to use was done differently.
Did you have anything to add on the time, timeline on the stop signs or?
No. There's no warrant study done. None is necessary per se. Uh, City Council can go ahead and just order Public Works to go ahead and install that stop sign at any time.
All right. Would anyone like to? Well, would you like to make a motion? Do you want to send it to Public Works?
Yeah. Why don't we, uh, go ahead and send that to Public Works to get the nod to go ahead, uh, if that's what you need? I don't think we have to go through a study, like you said. So, I guess my question would be, when could he get on the work list and when could it be done?
Uh, if it's a super-high priority, we'd get it done as soon as it orders stop signs. So, it, that typically takes about six weeks.
So, probably January, January twenty-twenty, probably. So, it sounds like we need to send, um, that item to Public Works and then the other item to Police Finance and Admin and we can cover it there.
Yeah, the stop signs have, have already been reviewed by Subcommittee.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, we're, the, the, the staff report is actually done to, uh, seek council's approval for the, uh, override of the need to do a warrant, a traffic warrant study. So, we're, we're prepared, uh, to bring that forward to council and, and then that would, uh, provide the necessary support for the city engineer to, to order their signs. Uh, and there may, maybe a small budget amendment that we, to do to order the stop signs.
Okay. And let's just make sure that we get that on the next council agenda.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Now, moving, moving along swiftly, item number four, discussion regarding the sale of flavored vape products.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, Board Members. The, the item for discussion is, um, well, obviously, it's, it's entitled regarding the sale of flavored vape products. The, the, the specific ordinance that is referenced, uh, seven oh six, two sixteen and seven eighteen, two thousand and seventeen, uh, is specific to regulation of tobacco products.
If the discussion is regarding cannabis, then Councilmember, yes, the recusal would, would be necessary as agendized right now. I don't know, maybe, uh, the City Manager can provide more details. Is it simply about tobacco or is it a discussion about all vape products, including cannabis?
I, I, I think the, uh, the intent was to provide a highlight, or to highlight the, uh, existing restrictions and prohibitions in the smoking ordinance. But, um, I do understand that this, the school district may have some concerns as that language in the smoking ordinance relates to cannabis vape products.
Yeah, I think, I think initially this came up, um, Councilmember, uh, because we are trying to get clarification on what the ordinance really covers. And we understand that flavored vape products are often targeted towards children. And so, there are also flavored cannabis products, um, as I understand it. And I could be wrong. But that's really what we're trying to learn about, um, to see what the city ordinance really covers and if flavored cannabis products exist or if they're just named a certain way that we don't, I don't understand.
They're kind of named a certain way. But I think just, you know, just for fairness all the way across the board, I'd just step on it. But I have need to study what you're gonna talk about.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. The record show that Councilmember Brigham has left the dais.
Yeah. Well, for, for, for background, uh, for the council and the school board, uh, e- every year, the American Lung Association, uh, ranks individual cities in terms of, uh, and it's, it's a letter grade, much like, like your students, uh, receive, uh, in terms of, uh, how well a particular city is meeting their recommendations to addressing, uh, smoking. They're, uh, largely focused on, uh, nicotine or, or tobacco products. Uh, I don't know that they've really taken a specific stance, um, on, uh, cannabis products per se. Uh, but, uh, obviously, anything that you, you, you smoke is, is, and generates, uh, secondhand smoke uh, is, is of concern to the American Lung Association because, because really, that's their focus, obviously, is protection of your health and, and lungs. Uh, in, in response to that, the, the city, uh, in two thousand and seventeen did consider updating their smoking ordinance uh, to be more comprehensive and address particularly, uh, the smoking in public places. What's in, included in the packet is a copy of the ordinance. It's ordinance number, uh, seven eighteen dash two thousand and seventeen. Uh, it, it really is specific to, uh, tobacco and tobacco-related products. Uh, because I think what we are witnessing i- i- in, in the United States and, and both in, and in California is a real epidemic. i- in, in the United States, uh, and, and both in, and in California, is a real epidemic around, uh, particularly, uh, some of the new, uh, tobacco vape products. Uh, Juul is one that comes to mind, you often hear, uh, because they, uh, their marketing techniques, uh, often are focused on, uh, school-aged children. Uh, and the, the ordinance update was intended to, uh, provide additional guidance and restrictions about, uh, smoking in, in public places. Um, and there was a, uh, restriction and a prohibition added to the ordinance, and I'll, and I'll just, uh, try to paraphrase it as best I can, regarding flavored tobacco products. This is found in, uh, section eight point oh eight oh seven oh of our municipal code. Uh, this is no tobacco retailer sell shell, sell, sell a tobacco product containing as a constituent or additive an artificial or natural flavor, or an herb or spice, including strawberry, grape, orange, clove, cinnamon, pineapple, vanilla, cocoa, and goes on, lists more, more flavors. The intent being that, uh, of our ordinance would be to restrict retailers from selling, uh, flavored, flavored tobacco.
So, Mr. Kelly, just, just because of time constraints, I think that the board is more concerned, we, we've read the ordinance.
Okay.
And I, and I, I'm trying to be respectful, I just, I know that you have a meeting coming up. Um, I think we're more concerned, the fact that it, with the marijuana products that are for vape, that are flavored and things like that, they aren't included in this anywhere, or in any type of ordinance, and that, those are affecting our kids as, as well. And so, that's more of our concern. Am I, am I right? And, and just to make it a little more expeditiously, that's what we're looking forward to, is hearing if there's any, uh, anything on the horizon to be, um, creating an ordinance towards the flavored vape products.
Okay.
And we understand that, you know, uh, when you have marijuana products, they, they have strawberry names and purple names, but it's the actual flavored things, the things that are actually flavored by the, the manufacturers that we would like to take a look at.
Yeah, the concern was that, one was that, it seems that we have an ordinance against the sale of flavored vaping products in Cloverdale that are nicotine-based, but nicotine-based flavored vaping products are available, lea- at stores in Cloverdale, right over the counter. Um, so, some enforcement of that would be requested. And then, uh, as far as vaping products and minors are concerned, the largest use of vaping products amongst the minors here are cannabis-based. They, they moved way beyond nicotine, and so, most of the incidences are cannabis-based. And I know this was made before that was legal, um, but it would seem that the ordinance should also cover flavored cannabis vaping products, because it's, it has the same dangers as what's already illegal here. But the majority of the vaping products that are a problem with our kids are cannabis-based. So, those are our concerns.
Mayor, council, if I, if I can, uh, and, uh, unfortunately, the city doesn't have specific data available on the use of vape products specific to, to, uh, the Cloverdale Unified School District. Uh, however, we do have data, uh, on the prevalence of vape products, uh, both, uh, nationally and at state level, that has been, uh, vetted, both from a scientific perspective, and, and, uh, historically through, uh, you know, the, the, the United States Surgeon General, as well as other well-respected, uh, uh, health journals. The prevailing scientific evidence is that there is an increase in vaping, uh, both in tobacco products and cannabis products. Uh, the evidence in scientific data I've seen has been that the most significant increases have been with respect to, to tobacco products. Um, and, and then there's also the, there's a different regulatory scheme, particularly that operates in California, with respect to tobacco and cannabis. Uh, one being that the, the state of California, uh, through its voters legalized cannabis products and put in place a, a regulatory system that's very different than the regulatory system for tobacco. Uh, my understanding is, because there are a number of cities in, in Sonoma County that, uh, permit the sale of cannabis products, but also get a very strong rating from the American Lung Association for the regulation of tobacco products. Uh, but cannabis products are regulated, in my understanding, through the Cal- the, the state of California, whereas tobacco products are not. There's this critical, kind of, uh, regulatory distinction uh, between the two, uh, particularly, uh, where you can buy them. Uh, obviously, they're, from, from a cannabis product, it has to be a, both a state and local licensed retailer. Uh, that's not necessarily the case with, with tobacco products. Of course, we should in, make sure we're enforcing the provision, no, no, no sell of, of flavored vape, uh, tobacco products. Uh, and that, the vape product itself, in California, when it pertains to cannabis, is very highly regulated in terms of its actual content or material. Uh, I was under the impression or understanding that, uh, it, um, those products could not be anything other than cannabis, uh, so that it was actually technically illegal to infuse flavored or non-cannabis-related materials. Uh, but that's probably be something we would need to look at more closely, uh, to, to ensure that, um, because there, there's a, there's a very strong regulatory schema around cannabis. Um, and most all the vape products that, that are sold through a licensed dispensary undergo, uh, very stringent testing in California. We know that there's this, there's this issue going on with the sale of illicit vape products that contain contaminants, and, and that's, again, we see is in the, the illegal market, uh, which we, we don't have much control over. So, uh, it's an issue I think we, we might need to look at more, in more, in more close detail. Uh, a- and, and it is, uh, there, there is kind of this distinction from a regulatory perspective, because we have to be careful not to, uh, overstep our boundaries, because the state has set the rules on, on cannabis. Um, and they haven't quite done the same thing in terms of vape products, but we're starting to see, uh, when I say, uh, tobacco vape products, we're starting to see now, uh, regulations pop up. Uh, there's some ballot measures, for example, in San Francisco, that are directly related to, uh, sell Juul and, uh, other vape products. So, um, I mean, it, it's a changing regulatory environment, but, uh, I, I don't know if I fully answered your question, school member Addison, but, uh, tried to, to kind of draw that there is this, this distinction, and, and it's not a perfectly bright line between, I think, cannabis and tobacco products.
And I know we're about to end. I just want to say why this is so important to us, because I do have the data for our school district. And seventy-five percent of our eleventh graders think that it's very easy to, easy to get E sigs in Cloverdale. Uh, and we have, um, let's see, fifty-two percent of our eleventh graders have stated that they have vape before. So, that, I mean, every other student has. So, it, this is, this is a problem for us, and we want to do everything we can to curtail, uh, this use in our schools. I mean, I could, some of the, the six percent of my fifth graders have said they've used marijuana. I, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's something we have to focus on, and that's why we have brought it up as something, maybe you could look at, and maybe there's nothing you can do, right? I think it was just something that we wanted to know, um, because we see it as such a problem in our schools.
Well, with that, actually, I'd like to open it up to public comment. So, would anyone like to come forward and, and address this item? Please state your name and your place of residence.
Hi, Helen Bratton, Cloverdale. You may have already done this, but the fire made me think of a bunch of things, and...
Helen, we're talking about the, um, the tobacco and, uh, vaping ordinance right now.
Oh, I want to talk about the first public comment. Oh, you're in the school board meeting still.
Yes, we're in the school board meeting. You know what? Stick around. Stick around. I think, Plank, you got one more minute, and, uh, yeah, so...
I will wait.
No, you won't worry. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak on this item?
Good morning, our afternoon, evening, Madam Mayor, uh, members of council, members of board, city staff, Chief Ferguson, thank you for your time. Um, I appreciate the conversation. Sean Bovee, Cloverdale, uh, I'm a merchant, uh, here in Cloverdale, licensed in compliance, uh, selling vape products that are, um, only cannabis. We do not sell flavored tobaccos at all, or E sigs, as you call them. Um, I, I, I'd like to be better prepared in the future. Uh, the agenda is somewhat misleading, you know? I, I thought this was specifically about tobacco. Um, as you should be, or perhaps you're not aware, there is a difference. Um, to answer your question, uh, I know that board member Addison had wanted to know, are there, uh, flavored cannabis? No, sir, there are not flavored cannabis, uh, products. Um, there are cannabis strains that have, um, names that, uh, perhaps are appealing to kids. Girl Scout Cookie, Purple Punch, uh, these products though are unfortunately, well, for us, fortunately, uh, not infused. Uh, these are pure, raw cannabis products. Um, the cannabis industry is regulated very heavily. Um, if, uh, if I'm caught one time selling to anyone under twenty-one years old, my license is pulled immediately, and I am not eligible for license again for five years. Where in retrospect, if, uh, somebody at another retail establishment is caught selling to someone under twenty-one years old a flavored tobacco product, a couple hundred dollar fine. Um, so, I, I'd like to see the conversation be one of education, awareness, um, rather than, um, false information, and, uh, the use of time that's, could be spent other ways. Um, I've met with, um, Principal Meredith, uh, over at high school. I've also met, uh, with President, uh, Principal Lucetti at Washington. Um, I'd like to, um, be a part of the conversation in the future, being that I'm one of the few licensed merchants of cannabis products here in Cloverdale. I'd like to know a little bit more about the numbers. Um, where are they coming from? Are they black market products? Are they products that me or another retailer are selling? Um, I'd, I'd like to be a part of the process of addressing that issue, not with your students, which is clearly a conflict of interest. Um, or we're not interested in coming to the school. What I'm interested in doing is educating their parents, uh, by way of letting them know that, hey, there's an increase of this issue here at the campuses, and it's not allowed. Please educate your kids and make them aware. Um, there is something we can do to help and work together, um, and I look forward to that. But it will have to be based on factual information. Um, w- really, we, we'll have to focus, if we're going to come up with solutions, on, on what really we're trying to solve. Um, quickly to, I, I, I noticed that, um, Mrs. King is here as well, who is also a cannabis merchant. Um, you, you have our attention. Uh, we are very, very involved in the community, very caring people. Um, we would very much like to be a part of the process, uh, in educating you, making you aware.
That's your three minutes, thank you.
Thank you.
And to be clear, we were looking for information and education from the city. That was the purpose of this item, so...
Okay, great. Would anyone else from the, from the public like to come forward and speak on this item? All right, I'm seeing none, I'll bring it back to, uh, council and the board. Do you have, uh, a direction to staff for a future agenda item, or anything that you'd like to discuss further?
No, I think that was just, we were looking for information, and if there was anything towards this type of products to keep it, keep us in mind.
Anything else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, I, I, I would just like to apologize for my sore throat and my cold. It's, it's, uh...
You're gonna make a blanket statement there, if you want to.
Yeah, it's really, it's really annoying, but, um, David, I'm, um, reading that, um, ordinance, uh, eight point zero, eight point zero, seven zero, and, um, it says, uh, flavored tobacco products, no tobacco retailer shall sell a tobacco product, um, that's infused with, with flavors, but we don't enforce that.
Well, the intent of the ordinance is, is to provide a, a provision that we can enforce it. Uh, if, uh, if, if we're not, it's something we'll, we'll, uh, we'll take a look at. Uh, and, uh, you know, the chief, chief of police will assess and review this provision, and, uh, we'll make sure if it doesn't provide the necessary, uh, language for us to enforce it, that we'll, we'll, uh, bring it forward for your consideration, language that does.
Vice Mayor, would you like to send this to police finance?
Yeah, I would, because, and not, not to belabor this, because we're running out of time, but also, in section, uh, eight point zero, eight point zero two zero, uh, electric smoking devices, um, battery-operated, uh, or electric, uh, you know, are not to be sold. And yet, we're, we, we need to discuss this at the police subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's send this to, um, the police subcommittee, and let's work on, let's do some work, and then we can, we can...
Thank you, guys.
Great.
But, you know, just, you know, to reiterate, this is a concern for me, too.
Yeah.
And I realize that if the city of Cloverdale, uh, bans these particular products, that they're going to go somewhere else and, and, and get them. But by the same token, i- at least we could rest assured that we're doing what we have to do to hopefully save a couple of those kids from getting hooked on those products.
Agreed.
Jeremy, would you like to just come to the subcommittee meeting and work with us on the language?
If I'm invited, absolutely, yes.
If you get direction from your board?
Yeah, I, I would enjoy it.
Okay, great. Then we will move on to, um, item five, and we need to go get, uh, council member Brigham again, if we can. Discussion regarding the Veterans Building Pool Heating Project. I know, you're, you're running, I know, I'm trying, I'm running on a tie sheet.
What time do you guys start? Are you six thirty or six?
We're six, but that's okay.
Six, we're six thirty, so we're in a better spot than you. It's really up to you.
We're gonna wrap it up.
And, and Mayor, we, uh, we did post the meeting to start at six, uh, but that means that that's the earliest the meeting can start.
There you go.
I- i- and if the council so, needs more time to deliberate, we, we can take that time.
There you go. We're gonna just cruise on through, and then we'll take, we're gonna take a short, we're gonna take a, a short break between meetings. But, um, so, item five, just, uh, regarding the pool.
Mayor and board, I'll, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, the, I, the item is an update on the Veterans Pool, uh, Heating Project, and thi- this was a collaborative project between the, the County of Sonoma, uh, the City of Cloverdale, and the Cloverdale Unified School District. Uh, this was, uh, worked upon, uh, by our former mayor quite a bit to, uh, establish a joint funding agreement for, uh, uh, solar pool heating improvements at the Veterans Hall here in Cloverdale. Uh, the Veterans Building and the pool is maintained and owned, uh, by Sonoma County for the benefit of, of, uh, the veterans of our community, and, and for all the veterans out there, thank you for your service. Uh, the, the funding agreement, what it provided for was, um, and I'll use round numbers, a fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five split of the cost of, of, uh, solar pool heating improvements at our pool. Uh, the intent was to, uh, enable greater use of the pool, uh, during the, the non-warm seasons of, of, uh, you know, the year, uh, including providing an opportunity for the school district to use the pool for some of the mandatory, uh, swim lesson training that's required under the edu- education code. So, we crafted a funding agreement, uh, that was, um, uh, rough numbers of about a hundred thousand dollars, split fifty, fifty thousand by the county, twenty-five, twenty-five respectively, uh, by the, uh, the school and the city. That project did get put out to bid. A bid was selected as tech construction. Uh, the work was un- was, was being performed, uh, and, um, in terms of a status update, uh, during the performance of that work, uh, that was being oversaw, overseen by the General Services Department with the county, uh, the Sonoma County Department of, uh, Health, who also regulates public pools, uh, stepped in and, uh, required that, and mandated, even though that they had approved the, the pool for operation earlier in the year, some additional, uh, safety and plumbing improvements. Uh, and that, uh, resulted in the county issuing a, a change order to the contractor. Uh, but unfortunately, the Cal- the, um, excuse me, the County Department of, of Health, uh, required the contractor who was going to perform this work, uh, which was on a vacuum safety system, to have a very specialized contractor's license. And, uh, unfortunately, it's been, uh, held up, uh, in the, uh, process, by the county in terms of how they're required to procure those services, and that's something that they're, they're working on. Uh, and so, right now, they are working on obtaining, uh, procuring a contractor to be able to complete the, this, these final improvements, uh, on the pool, uh, which would then, you know, in, in essence, complete the pool heating project, be able to connect that plumbing work, uh, so that the, uh, the, the, the solar panels and the solar heating system could actually do as it's designed. Uh, so, unfortunately, we've been kind of stuck in this bureaucratic, uh, stopping point because of the requirements of the, the two different, uh, county entities. Uh, but the funding agreement is still in place, um, and, uh, the only kind of remaining issue is whether there will be adequate funding available to... available to cover one last improvement, and that was for the pool cover. And the pool cover was kind of an important component to ensure that if we're heating up the water during the day, we can put the cover on and kind of keep that, the water as warm as possible. So I was able to get an update from the county, they're just trying to work through their own procurement processes to get the remaining work done, and the hope is we'll have that done in early 2020, in time for the pool season, and, you know, be off and running with a pool that will be available for use greater times than it is currently, which is really just Labor Day to Memorial Day currently, so. That's really kind of the latest status update on the pool. There was a, there was some, not so much related to the pool funding agreement, but certainly impacted the availability of the pool this summer, was we contract with the Sonoma County YMCA for lifeguard services. We did execute an agreement with them, and unfortunately, they did not have all the adequate staffing available to support, you know, lifeguards and oversight of the pool, and that was quite a surprise to the county, or to the city, but didn't necessarily affect the funding agreement between the school district and the city and the county. That was just an operational issue that we encountered that affected the pool operation here. So that's an update from staff on that project, and we're going to do everything we can to try to see that that project moves forward. The challenge is, it's not, it's not an asset that's owned by the city, it's owned by the county, so we're kind of beholden to them and their processes for procurement.
Did you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you, David. And I know we just got a report from Keith Lou, is it, from the county, and he's basically saying that he regrets to inform us that he's unable to locate a suitable contractor to perform the work. Is there any contractors in the county that are licensed with this license to do it?
They have secured, they have a contractor that does have the necessary license. The issue is that that particular contractor is, as a lot of contractors are, has a number of other jobs that they're completing before they take this particular project on, so.
Great, great. If that's the state, any other questions? All right.
All right.
Any consideration of any other items of interest to both the city council and the school board at this time that you'd like to put on agenda for a future meeting?
Juvenile diversion program would be one that I would add. It's, the juvenile diversion program, Chief Ferguson and I sat in on a meeting, it's something that we have not discussed much, but we got a presentation, so I think it would be a joint venture between the city and school. That would be something to add.
Mayor, school board, one other item that I know was very important and to my sugar and was not added to our agenda was a presentation by the library. I know I've had discussions with Councilmember Cruz, they have some really great programs that could be particularly beneficial for the school, and would like to present it. The challenge tonight was with all the agenda items and trying to get through it on a timely basis, bringing that forward, but I know it was something we talked about, and that would be another great item, I think, to have the library do a presentation on all the services that they offer, particularly geared towards, you know, the school-aged children.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right, well, with that, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much for coming, and we'll be in touch.
Thanks, guys.
And there are some refreshments out in the hall, please help yourself.